Okay, it's six o'clock, it's time to call the order of Mount Pleasant Municipal Plant and Commission meeting. At this time, would you please stand? I'll ask Robert to do the invocation. Ted Hall will do the pledge, please.
We would bow with him, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, so thankful for this blessed day that you've given us. Father, we ask that on discussion here in this meeting tonight, business brought before this board, that you give us wisdom, you guide and direct our decisions, that it be beneficial to all present and City of Mount Pleasant's residents. Father, we ask for protection as we leave this place tonight, continue to watch over us, guide and lead and direct our lives, and we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, in the Republic of which is yours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is approval of the agenda.
Motion, we approve the agenda.
I have a motion. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Let the minutes reflect that we have a forum in present at this time for the meeting. Enough to hold a forum. Item number four is approval of the minutes prior to meeting July the 13th, 2021.
We approve the minutes.
I have a motion.
That's second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is plot approvals.
No, there are none, Chairman.
Number six, rezoning request. At this time, I'll turn it to you, Robert.
Yes, sir.
That you can give us an update on what's going on.
Thanks, Chairman. I'd like to thank all the boards, all the board members for being present, all that are here in the audience tonight. Before you tonight is EC 081021 RZ1, owner B&amp;B Properties and representatives for B&amp;B Properties are in the audience tonight as well, have submitted a rezon request for property South Port Road and Frierson Lane, further identified on tax map 133 NB parcel 07.00. That being noted, recorded in deed book R2700 on page 071, flat book page 130, also on file American Register deed office. The existing zone designation for this particular piece of property is currently R1 low-density residential. The request comes before this board from applicant asking to rezone the entire parcel to R3 high-density. The purpose of that particular request is the development of a residential subdivision. This is brought to my office, I've spoken with the applicants who are present here, we discussed details of this particular request, and as a result of our review in-house, there's been comments that's been provided in relation to the rezon request. And I'd be glad to go over those with the board if you see fit, or just cover my staff comments and the opening on the comment page of our findings.
Robert, I know it didn't clearly show on here, but at this time, ain't this vacant lots?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't think that's something it was. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The owner applicant, B&amp;B Properties, submitted a rezon request for property located, of course, Frierson Lane, South Port Road. The subject property is located east of an established residential subdivision, also zoned R1 low-density residential that's located on Gant Street. And the adjacent development is considered legal non-conforming by current zoning standards because it don't meet bulk requirements set forth in our zoning ordinance for R1 lots, which are identified in your comment list that I gave you. Low-density residential zoning also bused said subject property to the west and north with Frierson Lane separating subject property from these adjacent properties. So, all that to say that around that particular piece of property right now is all zoned R1 low-density residential, and the property in question is as well. The, if you go to that second page on the comment sheet that I provided for y'all, I'll go over my comments. The R3 description states that the zone district should be located adjacent to downtown commercial activity. As you know, Frierson Lane's up the street here, our downtown is situated just down the street, it is close to commercial activity. The district uses built-to-lines instead of traditional yards to establish a unified appearance from public streets. There are no other properties in the general vicinity zoned R3, however, in 2017, a large parcel of land was rezoned from RG1 to R3, and that's where the current town home development by Mr. McNeese is being worked out.
To Clark's scope.
That's correct, yes, sir. It was rezoned, it was successfully brought as an application to this board, and it was rezoned and it's currently under development, but that is down the street from this location. That's just things to consider for the board, consider the type of developments you've currently got going on in that location. And down the street, also, please consider that the lots existing, there are one, are non-conforming lots because they don't meet the bulk regulations. Even prior to our zoning change, they didn't meet the bulk regulations. But when we changed our zoning ordinance, we upped the minimum lot square footage requirement from 15,000, 18,000. Even at 15,000, they didn't meet the requirements. But they have historically been zoned low-density. So this was even prior to, two, three, probably three or four zonings ago, when that.
Probably hadn't been nothing built there, though, in 75 years.
That's correct, yes, sir. Yeah. I just want to let everybody know that they are non-conforming, even though they are one and they surround this property, they're still non-conforming lots. So if the house bought there, then, you know, some type of arrangement would have to be made as far as variance, if that non-conformity issue goes away, they couldn't really build on that lot under the current zoning. But this particular lot right here, as you see in the handouts that I provided there, also, there was a concept idea brought to the, to my office as part of the application, and you see the concept on the design, it's written on that page right there, that's correct. The applicants are here and present, if the board wants to speak to them directly with any concerns, or I can answer, try and answer any, any questions that you may have in relation to the request.
Well, once again, before this board, as we said in the past, and all boards aware of, this is only a rezon.
That's correct, yes, Chair.
Everything else has to come back through your office.
It has to come back.
Come back through ours or anything.
That's correct, yes.
This is just a rezon issue tonight.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Is that in city limits?
It is in city limits.
We got sewage up there?
Sewage actually stops short of that property. It extends down to, and pardon me because I don't know the exact location, but.
Gardenia.
Around Gardenia area.
Gardenia is what I would say.
So you're looking at about, approximately, and please don't hold this, hold this against me if I get it wrong, but I've spoken with Public Works, and from where the sewer line is currently, ends, you're looking at a developed length of probably 400 feet just to.
Didn't it run to the old Clark Manor there, or whatever, I mean, to?
It does.
They are on.
Hunter Hills.
They are.
Hunter Hills, yeah.
But it also goes up to Gardenia.
But Hunter Hills is past, I mean, Gardenia is past.
Does it go to Gardenia?
It does, yes.
So it's like 250 feet.
It don't go up to, but it goes to Gardenia.
To the corner. Yes.
Yes.
First corner.
That's correct, yes. So, I misspoke, it was about 300 feet. When we had that discussion, because we looked at the maps and looked at where the sewer stopped, so you're looking at about a developed length of 300-plus feet maybe, to get the sewer service to that location. Under this request, sewer would be imperative to this property because if this gets approved, it ups the density, reduces the lot size. Reduction of that lot size is not going to allow for septic system. So the sewer would have to be brought to the property and also made available to the houses that are in the development in the future. But that's all part of the construction documents.
I had to say, that's something that later down the road.
That is correct, yeah. I just wanted to answer.
I'm done, I'm done.
No, I wanted to know because I don't, I mean, I know we're just rezoning, but I don't want, you know, to come back later, you rezoned this with what we expected and then did not be.
You bring up a good point, and I'll address that, just so the board is aware, as you've seen in the comments that I provided, there are several uses allowed in R3 district, all residential, but multiple dwellings can be situated in that R3 district, not only single families, even though the concept shows that, but town homes, duplexes, all, anything residential can be.
As long as it meets the lot.
As long as it meets the lot requirements.
Right.
That's correct, yes, sir. But, just, you know, so everybody's aware.
Is there anybody who wants to speak?
I am, before we get, we get into this, is anyone here tonight to sign on here that would like to speak on behalf of this? So, I'll get him.
I'll tell final, y'all come.
Just come forward and state your name and address, please.
Hey, how's it doing, man?
Sign yourself.
And you?
My name is Kevin Drake, and I wanted to add the question, I don't know about zoning and stuff, but I do know that I've seen where they had the stakes there back there, and some of that is, seem like it's on part of the property that I figured it out on, and the structure there has been there since 1945. Now, like, the shit back there is all brick, and that's where that line is, so when they come put these houses there, do I just destroy some of my house? Or, I mean, a lot, on that lot right there, and I heard that before, people tried to buy it and they couldn't get houses put back there, they would deny it. So all of a sudden now that it's, people able to come get it rezoned.
Well, the rezoning.
This is before he was, I can't accuse him, I won't say it right there.
He's innocent.
But back, a while back, you know, people tried to buy, you know, I was going to inquire on it, but I was always told that you couldn't put homes there, so it was like, I wasn't going to waste my money on it.
Yeah.
But now, all of a sudden now, you can do that, or?
No, only if it's rezoned.
You could have probably done it then, but you gotta, like, get the sewer to it and everything else, there's a lot of other things that had to happen.
Right.
And get it rezoned.
Yeah, but how would that affect as far as when they put new sewers and stuff in there, whether, is it going to be run by the city, or is it going to be on city sewers? Because we're on septic on Gant Street. So would that make us part of that, or just, that'd be special for them?
That'd be something down the road that you could.
We can't answer that question.
You know, we, we're not into the utilities part.
I can give you an example, the Gardenia has sewer, and some people are on it and some people aren't, but if the sewer is there, you're paying for the sewer whether you choose to stay on septic or not. That's, that's the way the law is written.
So Gant?
But it would have to go down Gant Street.
Well, I don't know that, I wouldn't get that far yet.
It would have to be there, to where they connect to.
Exactly.
Because probably on the facing end.
We had this issue years ago down at Churro Creek and stuff, when they put it in down there.
Would we have to pay for, the residents have to be forced to?
That's something that don't, don't come for.
That's way.
That's way down the road and stuff, you know, that's, all they're looking for tonight.
If the sewer's running in your, front of your house and it's available to you, you either hook on or you pay for it.
I'm talking about would I be hooked up to it automatically, I don't mind paying for it, I mean, if I.
He's asking really, if it could go down Gant Street.
You would have opportunity to be hooked.
If it's there, you would be able to hook onto it, I can answer it that way. And I don't know if it's going down Gant Street, but if it's there and you're, and it's available to you, yes, you'd be able to hook into it. But I didn't get your address, I'm sorry.
I got 524 Gant Street, and I own the property from, I think it's 521.
Okay, and your last name was?
Drake.
Drake, okay. Great.
Like I say, the question you asked is, is something we can't, we can't give you answers for, all we're, we're here for is the rezon.
Y'all will approve it today or disapprove it today, so a lot of questions I'm asking that's still going to be unanswered because.
Well, see, that comes back when they come back before us, again, with the site plan and so forth, it comes to that.
Yeah.
And site plan can be denied.
Yeah, it can be rezoned and still, what they bring back to the commission for the site plan don't mean it's going to be approved, and then it can be.
I have no big problem with it, but like I said, I mean, I, I think the orange stakes there, in part of the backyard that I assumed that was mine, you know, but years ago, that house was built in 1945, and it's all brick. So what do I do? I mean, do I cut part of my house off?
So we have had that happen quite often in many neighborhoods in Mount Pleasant, and the only one.
And the problem with the development.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I mean, you packing all them houses in a little small area, you know?
You would have to compare the survey that they have compared to a survey that you would do, and it's between, it's a civil agreement or disagreement between homeowners, that you'd have to, I don't know, when your property was surveyed, and that would, you'd probably need to resurvey your property as well. Corey, do you, is there anything else I'm missing?
No, so today, just to put it in perspective, today they are voting on whether or not they can rezon this property from R1, which is single-family homes, to R3, which has availability for more higher-density houses. So that's the only thing that they're voting on. The site plan and things like that would come back before them, but I think what you're asking is about your property line, right? You want to know what's being built. But they don't know the answer to that question yet because it hasn't been proposed.
Yeah, but if it got approved, then it'd already be in the making, I'm saying.
The rezon would be, but.
Yeah, so the nature plans would already be in the making.
Yeah.
These people got their home, I mean, so does he, but what I'm saying is this house was built a long time ago, and that's the residence I live in, me and my children.
Right.
So, part of that stake is on the property that I live in.
So that's the property line dispute that Ms. Collier was talking about.
That's going to take that, or I got to argue with them and fight them in court over something that, you know, you were familiar with yours for years.
I think that's the issue that would be between y'all, whether it's R1 or whether it's R3, whether that.
Whatever they say, it's the issue.
Whether it be them or whoever come back and bought the property, if they run a survey and it didn't agree with your survey, that'd be a civil matter between yourselves and stuff.
It does happen.
I don't know what the stakes are for, I don't know if the developer's here, if that's somebody you want to talk to after the meeting, but.
But I need to make plans to sell my house.
No, I think you're seeing a talk to them and figure out where the line is.
You need to figure out the correct line.
I've got some measurements, like, so if you want to see me afterwards, I'll share that with you, what the, it's the, what the tax record says the measurement of your property is. I mean, that's not going to solve your problem, but I'd like to share that with you, yeah.
Already, already the, the addresses, on my street and Frierson Lane, I live on 524, and my, some of my mail goes to 524 Frierson Lane, so all that stuff on the Google Maps is messed up.
True.
I think the argument that you're making to them today, I'm going to try to help out a little bit, is that smaller or higher-density would have shorter setback lines, and so that could encroach on your property more than R1. I think that's.
Yeah, they do reduce, yes.
Yeah, they reduce the setback, so.
So would y'all have another meeting or have more questions? Because I will.
When they, if this gets passed, it comes back, or all public meetings, you can come back and speak at all of them.
And it has to go to the commission after it got.
Yes.
After the call.
Depending on the vote tonight, it still has to go to the city, they have to vote on it and.
That whole street, that whole street, man, part of that property on that lot is connected to it.
Right.
So it's like, that's going to be all shit, excuse my.
Okay, I understand.
But I mean, you know, you've been living there for years and stuff, you know what I mean, and somebody come in and buy, it's their own business.
Right.
But I mean, you got to understand, stuff was already there, and you know, they do what they want to do.
I would talk with them about where the, where they think their line is, and see if y'all can agree on where the property line is. That might answer your question, more so than the commission, is talking to the owner.
Will I get another summons?
So this, this issue will be before the city commission on Tuesday.
Tuesday night.
Yeah.
The 17th, and then again for second reading the third Tuesday in September.
Because really, we make a recommendation to the full commission, we'd all.
Yeah.
But they won't be able to answer that question about where your property line is.
Neither will the city commission.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I see, well, I see where they put the stakes at, what I want to know is.
But you need to get your. But you need to get your own property surveyed.
Why should I have to go through all that?
Well, see, we, we hear this a lot on the plant and commission, and people have lived in areas for a long time, and then a vacant lot's been here for 20 years. We, we hear this all the time, then when they come in, well, they're going to cut our trees down, they're going to do this and do that, you know, that happens. When people buy these lots, they, they don't buy them to leave them empty.
Yeah.
They, they, these developers and so forth are going to try to develop something on them.
Yeah.
I don't think they're going to fence them in and, and run cows or anything like that on them. I'm not trying to be cute, but I'm just saying, people buy these properties for an investment and to build stuff on.
Yeah.
And everything, and I can, I can understand your point, too. We can't give you them answers.
And like tonight, we're just voting on R1 or R3, and we're talking about a property line issue regardless how it's zoned, and you still have the same issue.
Issue's still there.
Yeah, yeah, regardless how it's zoned, so all we're doing is rezon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Come on up, Jay.
I may be at the wrong meeting, I don't know. Uh, I own property all up and down South Port, not a wife. The water line comes right through, I'm right across from the development.
Right.
I have rental property on out, South Port Road. I just want to be sure the water line's going to be brought up because the water pressure on South Port Road is terrible. We don't even have 20 pounds per square inch, and that's supposed to be mandatory, and if they drain, test the hydrant somewhere, it sucks the water out of South Port Road. So I may not be at the right meeting, and.
I understand, and you're, you're probably not at the right meeting because we, we won't have no issue over the, the water and nothing like that right there, but.
Or the sewer, so.
Sewer or anything, and then, like I say.
When they bring plans back to us, they're specific, that's when we start getting into that stuff, you, you know, you have to do this, you have to do that. Right now, we're just.
Well, see, y'all folks brought a sewer line a year, a year ago or so up South Port.
Rainy Street.
It was supposed to come up right up South Port, wasn't it? Y'all had.
I don't know any.
Y'all had, do what, they had.
They own a property that, Rainy Street.
Yeah, Rainy Street, that's part of our big sewer rehab, but that's, it didn't go past, didn't go past Rainy Street, yeah.
Okay, okay. So which meeting do I have to be at for this?
Yeah, I've taken notes, that you're right, 20, 20 is the lowest pressure, I'm going to at least reach out to Public Works about that.
If they have the problem now, I mean, it needs to be created. If they pop a hydrant over it in your subdivision, there's no water on South Port when you get.
Don't say we don't have them still, what else is new?
Well.
I keep that.
I'm just, you know.
Hey, wash dishes, take your shower, the same time.
I'm all for it, I'm not against it, but I just want to be sure the sewer and the water is brought in, it's going to have to get a couple of, it probably has to take a fence out when they do it. I'm all for it because I've got thoughts of my own, so.
Is the argument that the current water can't, the current utilities can't support a higher density, is that the argument you're making?
Yes, it can, it cannot handle it.
Okay, so that would have to be addressed.
Because it's not even.
The site plan as well.
20 pounds of pressure on the hose pipe, you can't only hold your thumb on it, and I know what I've been plumbing for years, I can cover a hose pipe up in my front of the pole. And that's one, you know, I just don't want it to get worse, I want it to get better.
I will look into that, I appreciate it.
If, if, if they give an approval tonight, it goes to the city commission, it's explained to you, they have to be rezoned, but that line then has to come to my office, of course, comes back to the plant commission. During the site plan review, hydraulics is looked at, calculations is looked at, developed length of pipe is looked at, to make sure that, number one, we're not creating more issues, but we're possibly supplying better volume.
Yes, and if that, if I can get that from you, I'm not coming back.
Well, we, we would involve a lot of engineers before we give you that.
It would be engineers involved.
As long as I got your word, you know, me and you both know the problem. And you talk, we've talked about other things, I've talked about doing things.
Yes.
And so that's my.
All, all that'll be looked at on the construction side of any development that goes anywhere, does that matter, not just in relation to Frierson, but we look at the construction documents prior to it ever coming before the plant commission, engineers are looking at it, and they're making sure that hydraulics work, number one, you got enough volume that you're pushing. Because we, we do know the concerns out there, and they, they, you know, as would anywhere else, it would be looked at as far as the.
Okay. So just go, or will somebody call me and let me know if I need to be at anything, or do I just?
Keep an eye on the plant commission.
You going to mail me something?
I'll call you, Jay.
Mailing is because of the reason.
Yeah, mail for the reason, but you can, but you can keep it, you can look at all.
Always posted in City Hall.
Always posted in City Hall.
I don't even text.
I'm trying to remember to call you, Jay.
City Hall, Post Office, Library.
One of us will call. Planning commissions every second Tuesday, city commissions every third Tuesday.
I don't know all of them, Jay. I'm hoping all of them.
I'm going to have to do this. I just want to be sure that does.
All right, thank you, Jay. I got Rodney Cooper's.
I don't know what's going on, that's all.
What's up?
With Frierson Lane and Gant Street.
Yeah.
And it rezoned.
All they're doing tonight is have some developers come in, and they purchase this land, and before they can do anything with this land, it has to be rezoned and stuff because everything in the area is considered R1 low-density.
Back on the other side of Frierson Lane.
All, all of that's.
Down Frierson Lane, between Ms., Ms. Taylor.
You can show a picture of the lot there.
Between Ms. Taylor, yeah, that lot sits right, right.
I'll show you the, this is the, the area of it, and this is what they want to do, they just want to, I mean, that's their, that's not what we're voting on, but that's their concept. Let's see, that's Gant and Frierson, and they're going to.
That makes sense, see.
It's three acres, right? 2.7 acres.
We don't, I mean, we don't know exactly that.
We don't know what they're going to put in there, because they, they got an option of things they can put in there, from, from town homes to multiple family homes, if they need.
But they have to come to us and say, here's what we want to do, and then we look at that and make a decision.
All the engineers.
Right now, all we're doing is saying, okay, we're going to let you move forward and, or not.
Good?
Yes.
Thank you. I got one more on here, and I, can you make the name up?
That was Jay.
Was it?
Yeah, Jay.
Wait, which one?
I wrote Jay's name on there. Give me just three.
There's four.
Oh, that was Jay. Look, Jay.
Jay. The gentleman in back was.
Ah. That's, that's fine, come forward. State your name, please.
Kevin Cooper. Only two plot parcel up on Gant Street, and my biggest question is, if they are able to build in there, can I build on my spot, or put something on it, because I've been under pressure that I can't do anything.
Where's your spot, you kid?
I'm at a, uh, let me just say.
Okay.
If it's currently zoned R one and you'd want to do what they're doing, you'd have to do the exact same thing coming back in front of this board.
Okay, that's what I'm just saying. If they're able, am I able? That's all.
Absolutely. Yeah. To get it rezoned.
You'd have to, you, you have to do requests for a rezon.
I'm seeing that also.
Yes.
Any others like to speak on this matter? Anything from the board? Not entertain a motion on this rezoning, okay?
Member or seat?
All right. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this because there's, shouldn't be any adverse effect on property owners. It sounds like it would most likely be some good effect on some of the utilities that out there. And it doesn't benefit any small group and. There you go.
I have a motion. I'll stick to the motion. I have a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Uh.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
We have two notes.
I, I, yeah. Want to do a roll call vote?
I didn't hear the votes.
Okay. I'll, I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Granberry?
No, because there will be an adverse effect on the general property, on the front end and the backside too.
Um, Mr. Howe?
Your vote?
Your vote. Yeah, just, yes, okay. Uh, Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
And Mr. Hunter?
Oh.
So it's three, two vote, motion pass.
Number seven, manifestation request.
There are none, Chairman.
Number eight, site plan request. I'll turn this over to you.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, has that plan come in? Uh, EC zero eight one zero two one SP one. Um, owner Johnny Potts has submitted a site plan request, a property located at one oh five South Park Drive. Purpose of this request is to support development and construction of a seventy-five hundred square foot addition to the existing structure on property, as well as construction of a four thousand thirty-two square foot accessory structure to accommodate the business needs of Cali Container. Um, we've looked at this. We've, uh, done a review. We've provided comments back, uh, to, uh, the owner and the engineer of record July the sixteenth, um, addressing some issues. And there is a dispute between, uh, previous zoning, uh, from the, uh, owner applicant and the city, uh, from, uh, previous zoning and maybe some interest there, uh, to the current zoning in regards to the setbacks, the old zoning versus the new zoning. Um, but getting back to the comments, um, there have, there has not been a recent middle to address the comments. Uh, plans were turned in to me this afternoon. They were due on August the third. But once again, I think it boils down to, uh, um, Mr. Potts and the engineer of record having a, uh, I guess their, their opinion in the matter is they establish a vested interest to the old zoning versus the new zoning. And it does involve the plant itself with the setbacks and so on and so forth. So there's some discrepancy there. Um, but right now, as it stands, comments were supplied July sixteenth. Uh, the, uh, stuff that's been submitted back to me this afternoon does not address those comments. Um, I know Ms. Jones is, uh, present, uh, here in the audience and, or here at the table. And then, uh, the city manager might have some insight, uh, they want to give to the board, uh, in regards to this. But that's, it hasn't been reviewed because it was submitted this afternoon, but just a cursory review indicates that no changes were made and, or, or the comments were not addressed.
Yes. Uh, planning commissioner members, I think that, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm disappointed that the submittal was not submitted in a timely fashion, but at the same time, the submittal is them again saying that the zoning is the way they think it is and not the way we think it is. So I'm of the opinion that we're not going to get anywhere until the attorneys get involved and speak towards it. And, uh, Corey has reached out to, uh, the owner's attorney, which at this time is Jake Wooliver, who's been out of town. He's back tomorrow. She's made arrangements to speak towards, to him. Uh, I know the owner wants to move forward on this quickly, but we're, we're in two different zoning. So you can't even figure out what to, to apply. So until we can get that resolved, uh, I don't think you can move forward because the recent middle is not going to be sufficient at this point. And the owner has asked, uh, to assist in moving this along quickly once the attorneys do talk and has requested a, a special call meeting. I, I don't know what dates you would possibly be available that would get you here before the next meeting is September fourteenth. I think we looked at with a holiday in between times, but that's the request that, that I was, uh, told to ask of you. I don't know how quickly you can get with Jake, but, um, that needs to get resolved. And then whether we do a special call meeting or not, it's up to the board, but, and, and I'm, we're willing to do that. It's just what the board wants to do.
Well, with the difference that they're on their orders and everything, I, I, I don't see that this board should be in a hurry, you know, on a special call meeting and, and there, you know, not agreeing with our, our current votes and stuff. I don't see this board having to have a special call meeting.
Corey, maybe you can explain it better than me. I just know it's, we're not on the same page.
Just so we all can be aware of everything that's going on. This issue has been going on for several months, I think.
Yes.
Um, the property owner believes that they have a vested interest in M two, which no longer exists. Based on the fact that I have right now, I believe that part of the property would have a vested interest in that M two, but part of the property would not because they're building on two different parcels. The, the expand, the expansion, additional building, one is on a different parcel. And so that's where the disagreement is. Um, I did reach out to Mr. Wooliver when I found out that was his attorney. And like I said, he, or like Kate said, he has been out. I think the only reason to have a special call meeting is because this has been a disagreement for such a long time. And I feel like if we can reach an agreement with the attorneys, then maybe this is something that can be resolved quickly. But that's obviously with the board's discretion. What we're asking for, because I have spoken with his attorney, is a deferral, to not vote on it today.
I agree. I agree.
Uh, but if you have questions about the legal part, we can address this now, but it probably is better until we make sure we all have a understanding of exactly what the facts are, because I think there's a disagreement on, you know, the.
I agree. I agree. With that being said, instead, do you want to entertain a motion for a deferral on the matter here?
I'll make a motion. We defer.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. You want a roll call?
Do we need a date or do we need to say?
Are you deferring it to a regular, to the next meeting? Are you deferring it to a special meeting to be determined?
I would just say we defer it to the next scheduled meeting with the information we have now.
I agree.
Not still second.
Want a roll call vote on this?
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yeah.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Number nine, old business?
There is none, Chairman.
Ten other business?
No, sir.
Board and staff comment?
Uh, no, sir.
Uh, citizen comments, all of them were taken up?
Yes, sir.
Uh, all right. Number thirteen.
John, making a motion with a German?
One sec. John, thank y'all.